Did you want one of those?
Sure.
It's real exciting stuff.
Never been to one, so I'm pretty sure.
Oh. Steve, were you out at the fly-in? No? I checked the cameras, seen people were there, so it was fun. Dina had just said they were a little quieter with pilots because they said the ceiling was all hazy and yeah. Somebody said 700 feet and you couldn't see a thing. That's not really that high. Oh, I don't know.
Recording in progress.
Item is 4:30 PM. City, we have like a Rapid Council meeting in Tampa. 2021 was called for order. I'd ask if you have not signed in, there's a clipboard on the table by the rear door, and you would sign in before you leave. And also if you have cell phones, please put them in the binder. We'll call a member, Adely.
Um, Councilmember Steve Strian.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Dollar.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Marca.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Fester.
Here.
Mayor Frank Craig.
Here.
Want to welcome those in our council chambers, also those joining us by Zoom technology this evening, and those that'll be seeing our council meetings on Wednesday evenings on channel 14. I only have one announcement for the next few weeks. Our next city council meeting is Tuesday, August 31st, 4:30 PM here in city council chambers. Are there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Harry, none of we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, citizens' comments, if any, Congress. I see none. Item number three is agenda additions or deletions. Any additions or deletions? We have a motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion same. Motion carried. Item number four is approval of consent agenda. I will read those items. Item number four, A is approval of minutes of the council meeting on July 13th, 2021. Four B is approval of council table listing. Four C is Pelican River Pheasants Forever lawful gambling application on September 30th, 2021 at the VFW. Item number four, D1 is police chief report, which is in your packet, and also four D2, a financial report, which is in your packet. So motion to approve.
Will move.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? 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 Harry, none of all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion same. Motion carried. Item number five, Don was a man. Amanda gonna be here?
My understanding that Amanda's gonna be here.
Should we skip over that for now?
I have not talked to her. She just put it into, have her on the agenda, so.
Do you want to?
It's just, they're having their, their 5K run as they usually do every other year. They've done it, same routes as they've used before, so they're just looking for approval from the council to do that again, from what I gathered, so.
Will you approve? Second. Motion second. Discussion? Do we have a date on that?
I have.
Do you have the paperwork?
August 14th.
August, okay.
August 14th.
So this Friday?
Seven.
Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We knew it was gonna be last minute.
Right.
Any other discussion? Harry, none of all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion same. Motion carried. Item number six is street parks report, Superintendent Olson.
Short and sweet here. Um, yeah. The last week, been interesting. We have, uh, still have a current leak behind Historic City Hall. We have a water line that runs from Historic City Hall up to Peterson Park to the drinking fountain that's up there. And we're getting all kinds of water in the basement, after we had a water line break down there in the basement of Historic City Hall. So, uh, we've had Servpro, came insurance, turned it into insurance, they took care of it. Um, now they just need to come and finish putting everything back together. But the water leak outside, we've dug up, uh, two panels of concrete, found some leaks, put it back together, and at the very end of the gravel pad, it's running water again. So I have eggies coming back to take up some more concrete, um, and hopefully we'll find the leak that, that's really causing all this. And then we had one, uh, Thursday afternoon, actually I found two of them. There was, uh, driving in Sharon Park, and here's, here's a water, our water line that's runs in the park, is percolating out of the, out of the gravel road. And I kind of panicked because Art in the Park is Saturday. So I kind of got to get this fixed, so, so we did, we got that one fixed. Also Thursday afternoon, I'm down on First Street Southwest, and noticed a big wet spot in the, in the seam between the gutter and the asphalt. And I thought, that's really weird. So did some research, sure we have a leak there. We dug that up. It was a service line going over to the truck shop down there. So that one's repaired, Sharon Park's repaired, Historic City Hall's the only one that's still running, so. It was just weird, why now when it's been so dry that, you know, no moisture in the ground, no, why, why is it, why are we getting leaks? But, any rate, they're, they're done. So, um, just an update on Cassa 96 and 100, they are about 98% done. There's a little bit of concrete work left that they have to come back and repair, otherwise that project is, will be about wrapped up, so. And, uh, talked about, um, the ultralight fly-in was July 25th, and Jeff Shonak wanted to thank the city, the council, because they had a great time. They had 75 to 80 people out there, they had 25 to 30 pilots that camped out there, and they just had a great time. They, uh, had Escobar's trailer out there on Saturday and, and had a, had a good time out there, so they really enjoyed it. The, one guy came all the way from Utah to go to this fly-in, so I was like, wow, that's crazy, but they really enjoyed that, so. Um, swimming pool is going to close this Sunday, the 15th, just due to, uh, lack of staff. They start back to college and sports, and so the 15th will be our last day being open.
Coming Sunday, that's next.
This Sunday, the, August 15th. Yep. So that, that will be, be it for this year. Um, everything, all the events went really well in the parks this year. It's been, been interesting and to, just to have events again was fun, actually, just to kind of forgot what it was like after last year, so. Um, and then, so now, you'll probably, all of them noticed, but we've really started dropping the river, and so we're, we're now at the point where we're gonna start pulling the stop logs out of, uh, to control the flow under the windmill house. So we'll start that, because the dam's low enough, and so then we'll get it down, and we'll have to talk to them and see where, how low they really want it before they start, but it'll be, that's the process we're in now. Um, the campground is still open, still busy, and plan to have that open through Oktoberfest, which I believe is October and the 10th, or something like that, so we will keep that open, and hopefully the reservations keep coming in. We've had a lot of campers this summer, so. Any questions?
So this is probably putting the curb below ours, but somebody talked to me about the condition of the Pelican.
Yep.
If it gets moved, I mean, is that, it hardly fits the Pelican.
I, I don't know that yet. Um, I've looked at it, and it's cracked, and there's, it, it needs, yeah, there's a chunk out of it, and it needs to be repainted, but I'm not sure how you go about doing that yet, and, well, we, yeah, right on the neck and then down lower, uh, towards the back feathers too, but we have replaced the beak, um, a few years ago with metal, but.
Everything else is firewood, right?
It's like, um, plaster is what it is, yeah. So, and it's a wire shell that they've just covered with, with plaster, the way it looks, and I'm only gathering that from the kiosk that's up above. A rebar is out, yeah, I'm not sure what it was, but it, uh, so yeah, we'll have to definitely look into that, but I'm not sure how you do that in the wintertime either, you know, we're, how do we?
Well, I imagine it'll be taken down to be moved, and that, in my head, would be probably the best.
Right. It all depends on when they start. I don't think it'll fit in the city shop.
One of the things that I know that the DNR has had conversations about amongst themselves is the construction of that thing and what it's made of, and so they're taking this consideration for the, the construction of it.
Yes.
And what they need to do to protect that as they move it. So there's, there's a possibility that, um, through the move, there might be, that might drive more of a need to repair some of the little things that might fall off.
Yeah, and I, I know I sent them photographs of that kiosk at the time, so.
We'll be talking to them too, because it might be a combination of them and us doing whatever needs to be fixed after this move. Do we have drawings on that?
The only ones I'm aware of are the ones on that kiosk, the photographs. That's the only ones that I'm aware of, but, so. No, right? It was photographs as it went, and, yep.
Any other questions?
So, does it drop down at Perry Lake?
No. That's been said 100 times. Um, one of the people from the DNR said it's impossible for it to happen because Perry Lake is lower than the Pelican River. So, way lower, so it cannot, it cannot drop, it cannot lower Perry Lake. Perry Lake's dropping because of the drought like all lakes right now. It's not, it's not what we're doing, no. Nope, so.
Why does it drop an inch or more a week?
Yep. No.
Perry's also got weir on.
They have a rock rapids there.
Yeah. Can they just cut part of that weir down?
Yep, they took that down and then put the rock rapids in there.
And Steve, just something to think about, last year, when there was no drought and evaporation that's been going on, when we took the dam down as low as we could go for the DNR to do their evaluation and get pictures and produce engineering and stuff, we were down as low as we could go, and nothing happened at Perry Lake whatsoever. So that's, that's another, you know, basically another way of proving that, um, what we do down here has no effect on Perry Lake.
Yep. And that was, yeah, four years ago, and we did that, and there was no, there was no, no issue.
We were lower than we are right now by far.
And we will be lower still, and, no, so. The Pelican River. Not below the river.
They all know that the dam is way up here, and, or the lake is way up here, and the dam is way down here, there's nothing we can do to fix that.
Yep.
Any other questions? The airport looked good for the fly-in and the Perry riders.
Thank you.
The driest conditions to do anything, it looked pretty good.
Yeah.
My compliments to you guys for getting that thing taken care of.
Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to accept the Superintendent Olson's report?
Will be accepted.
Second? Okay, second. Discussion? 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 Harry, none of all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion same. Motion carried. Uh, there's a bullet point underneath his report, it's property on Ridge Crest Drive, water slash sewer. You know, we're all excited when we hear about, uh, new home in Pelican Rapids, and it's still in the process or being developed to, uh, develop our acreage western town for single-family housing, but there's also like 60-some lots within Pelican Rapids where single-family homes can be, uh, constructed. And, uh, this evening we have, uh, Ms. R. S. Elliot Ramirez here, and she purchased a lot on Ridge Crest Drive, and I believe it's Lot 6 on Block 2. And, uh, all those lots up there have been stuffed in with water and sewer services, except the lot that she purchased, and somehow the city, uh, didn't see that when that construction was done approximately 20 years ago.
It was done in 20, 20 years ago, 2001.
So somehow that was overlooked, and she has purchased this lot with the intentions of erecting a home there, but she does not have water and sewer service, and when those other water and sewer services were stuffed in, the, the city paid, that's not the map up there.
No. Can you get it up there or not? You have the map in your, in your, uh, packet, it's page six, and I've outlined with bold lines the, the lot that it is.
And previously, when that water and sewer was stuffed into those lots, the city paid for it, and it was assessed to the property owner, and they paid for it and canceled over a few years. And Superintendent Olson, Don and I met, uh, last week one day, and we talked about this situation, and we got a price to stuff in water and sewer to her lot, just to the lot, at approximately $6,000. So we would like to propose that would come before this evening, that we could go ahead and do that, the city would pick up that tab, and then we would assess that to Ms. Ramirez under property taxes, or she could pay it all upfront, or pay it over a few years. So that's where we're, uh, setting out here this evening, and that's why she is with us, and, did you have any comments on this, Ms. Ramirez? Anything you'd like to say?
Uh, sure. Um, thank you all for taking the time to be here and to listen to the situation. I do appreciate you all taking the time to consider even helping me out with, uh, building my future home, hopefully. Um, it's, it's been a crazy year, and talking to lots of people, I've learned a lot about learn, building a home and all that stuff, so it's been fun, and then I came across a situation, and I'm just, like I said, I'm thankful for everyone's time. Brian, I know has, the mayor has also spent lots of time looking and investigating as to what happened and what can be done, so I just appreciate you guys taking the time to, um, looking at all that stuff, so. Um, that's all I have to say, I guess, so, I'm, I'll just sit back down and.
Before you say, do you want to have any questions?
Yeah, do you guys have any questions, any?
Hi.
Yeah.
When do you hope to start building?
I was hoping for this year. Um, I was going to put in a mod, a modular home, um, that was the plan, and then, like I said, getting bids and everything from people, this came upon that, the situation, and, um, so just a little bit of a setback, which is okay, because it just gives me time to save more money, so, um, that works, um, but hopefully next year, that's, that's the plan now, because it's just late in the, in the year to even get anything done now, so. Um, so, like I said, it's fine, save, save more money, and my parents like to have me living at home, so that's fine. They don't mind, so, um, but yeah, possibly next year.
Brian, would, would the service lines be put in next year, or would they still be done this year?
Um, I would try to get them in this year. Absolutely try, because spring's busier than for the contract or so. I would, I would push for this year.
Brent, I was looking for the drawing, but I'm not sharing the right.
8:29.
Yeah, but I'm not sharing the right screening for this, with this computer, so, um, so one of the things, I don't, I couldn't remember what I was looking for, if you have an action, we don't know what the total cost is going to be, um, but, uh, the ideal was that, and maybe you alluded to this, you know, we kind of figured that that average cost of what assessments are was around that $6,000, so anything above that number, the city would basically take care of, to make it affordable and a doable project for Perry.
Because I believe right now, I think the assessment is still, the balance left is $10,000.
Yeah, because she's making an assessment on the street.
The street.
She's already has an assessment to her on the street portion.
Very special.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean.
Yeah.
I could take all the help I can get.
Well, I move to, uh, approve your recommendation, which is, checks out, now the city picks up the rest of it, right?
We have a motion second. Discussion? 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 Harry, none of all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion same. Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Here's your new home.
Yes, thank you.
Item number seven is dam removal project update, Don.
Thanks.
It'll go way too fast. Off slow. Um, yeah, I met with the, the DNR had kind of an update meeting, a virtual update meeting on July 26th, and, uh, myself and Brian attended it. Um, they reviewed, one of the things that they were looking at is they had the city attorney looking at all the abstracts, he collected up all the abstracts from the property owners along the river, um, and the purpose of that was to see if there could be some idea of, of how the property lines might change, if they change at all for the, for the river properties, and, um, what, what Greg kind of determined was, some of them rely on the river's edge, uh, as a boundary, identifying the boundary, and some of them don't. Each individual property owner, once this is all said and done, you know, it's their responsibility to figure out if they're, if they're, by their abstracts, and have them looked into, if they choose to do this, they don't need to, but, um, would look to see if their, if their boundary or their land and now moves because it's now the edge, because it states edge of the river, or avenue of the river, or whatever. Some of them were definitely, might, might say, you know, their, their lot is, you know, 125 feet deep, while if the river recedes back, and there's gap between that 125 point and the water, that wa, that area is not their property, their property doesn't change. So, um, Greg looked at all those, there was some of them that, that he couldn't tell from the abstracts, there was some people that didn't even turn in their abstracts, and so it's kind of a mishmash of a lot of things, but if they were reviewed to see, you know, to try and get as much information as we possibly could. But the bottom line, Greg just said that, you know, just as, just in any, in any land or property owner issue within the city, the city is not responsible, or isn't liable, or doesn't take, we don't go out and tell people, your property lines are here, we, we advise them to, um, you know, get a, get a survey or whatever, and have it determined, you know, by, by them looking at your abstract, or a land attorney or something, that's just the normal way of doing things. So each, each property owner, if they choose to do that, can take the option, uh, the actions to determine where the property lines are, just like they could right now if we were doing nothing. Uh, Brian kind of alluded to the drawdown, and during that meeting, what we asked them is, what would you like to see as the end date for the, the drawdown? And, and, you know, is it August 31st, or September 30th, what is it? And we came up with the August 31st. So by the end of August, we will be as low as we can go, the stop logs will be removed, we'll be just in the state that we were in four years ago, and, uh, they'll be ready to go. Now, one of the things that we're still taking into consideration is how fast it comes down, and it is coming down quick, so we may go slower, because we've still got, you know, 20 days in August, uh, we may even slow down more than that. What we're trying to avoid is going too fast to where we, um, start getting odor, and that was the whole reason for going down very slowly. Four years ago, we took it down, we were going down as fast as we could possibly go, so they could get their information, and there was some, um, some odor for a short period of time, and that's the reason for the slow drawdown, is to give the ground enough time, uh, as it goes down to dry out, because that, then we'll avoid any potential of odor, but.
There hasn't been any odor?
None.
There's a little bit today, I noticed, but part of that was too, they want the vegetation to start growing.
Right.
So.
Right. So, you know, and I noticed, today I was out taking a look at the level of the river, and when you get down at the end of the campground, and you see how low it is, all them grasses, well, I'm not gonna call them grasses, but all them plants that, that are growing up along the edge there, uh, you know, at one point, they might, some of them, if the DNR looked at it, they might say, well, them, some of them are aquatic plants, but I'm hoping that as things dry out and things change, that anything that's aquatic there would die off, but without having them come up and look at and tell us what it is. To me, it looks like just grass.
Yeah.
A lot of grass, but, yeah. So, so again, the drawdown's gonna go at least to the 31st of August, but it might extend that, it might extend that, just depending on, the goal is to get it down as low as we can go by then. And Brian talked about the stop logs can start pulling in soon, but, the other thing was, the DNR just let us know that they're going through their, their environmental assessment that has to be done, they also have a, what they refer to as a, I think it's called SHOP, but, ship, ship, ship holder, for the, and it's the state historic preservation, um, report, so between the state preserve, historic preservation and the environmental assessment, that's what they're going through right now. Once the EAW is done, uh, they'll have a draft of it, and they will actually submit that draft to the city to kind of review, and I don't know that it necessarily comes to a city council level or not, but they'll, they'll send it to us to review it, and then what happens, if we say, yeah, the draft looks fine, then it'll go out for a 30-day comment period, and when that comment period happens, um, we actually will put the, a notice of the review and the draft, um, EAW up on the city website, it also has to be published in the press, so, um, uh, we'll get a, a copy of that, that, also the notice and that stuff over to the press, so that people can start looking at it, to go through to anybody that wants to comment on it. Um, once that's done, then the final EAW will be, will be issued, or whatever the case is. One of the things that I asked them was, you know, we haven't had any, really any costs broken out that might be city's portion of any part of this project at this point. One of the things that they are still working on is applying the specs and all that stuff, but I told them, I said, we need to know as soon as possible, anything that you guys might identify as city's cost, or city's share in this whole thing. The only thing that we've been told along the, along the way here is that the DNR will pay for a bridge, what we're still looking at, and we know that this, the Lissard grant will not pay for a bridge. I do have, as part of the capital bonding system for the state legislature, um, from talking to our representatives, I have the swimming pool on that for the next legislative session, however, that's yet to have, well, we have yet to have a discussion on that, but if we wait for that, things may just blow away, you know, blow up for the pool, we don't know. But that's, the pool, as far as the state bonding and the state helping, is still a question mark. But I also put that bridge on the state bonding system, so that, uh, you know, I did get a, an estimate, um, of what it would potentially cost to have it engineered, go through the whole process, the bidding process with Houston Engineering, who know how much it would cost to do that, and then I submitted that and got it all in the state system, so that potentially the state would help us pay for getting a bridge in there. So we'll see how that goes. But I will ask them to just let us know if there's any costs that you guys think our city's share in this, we need to know as soon as possible, because to this day, we haven't had any conversations like that. We also talked about access on both sides of the river. Once this is done, um, you know, do we want to have it set up in such a way that people will be able to go down there and, you know, stand by the water as it's going through the rapids, fish, whatever they, whatever they tend to want to do? And we said, yeah, that would be a good feature to have on both sides, knowing that part of it is, is private property, so we talked about, you gotta make sure Don's on, on board with that, potentially on the other side, the property owner there too. So then we also talked, a couple last points, we talked about the testing of the sediment, as they dredge out the upper, upper portion of all the dam, the sediment up there needs to be tested, so that we have an idea of what's composed of, so that we can land apply it, or eggies might take it, whatever the case may be. Uh, and then we talked a little bit about the, the bridge, uh, replacing the dam that will go across there, and also the DNR would be more than happy to work with me on putting a, a grant in for the DNR auto recreation grant, so we potentially would have that as a funding source, and the state, um, capital bonding for a funding source. And then the only other thing is, getting ourselves in a position where we have winter construction this winter. And it wouldn't be fall construction, it'd be winter. That's all I have on the dam, is an update.
Yeah.
Going back to the beginning of this, with the property owners and the river drawdown, or when the dam's out and everything's at its should be, and the property owners are realizing they may or may not have more property, they can get their land survey, but it's going to go off their abstract, if they want 250 feet for, and then they're 50 feet short of the river, how would the property owner then go out climbing that land?
I don't know if they can, that's not, I can't answer that question. That would be probably a DNR.
Yeah.
If, if it's very clear in their abstract where their boundaries are, that's their boundaries. And if they want, if they want to, you know, extend the river, no longer have that set riverfront, I guess they haven't talked to DNR, or potentially buying it, if they would even do that, I don't know. I, I don't have a...
I remember, I don't remember the young lady's name from the DNR routine mentions that usually goes to the property owner, but...
Yeah, they don't want it. They've said that before, they don't...
They can maintain it, you know, who's going to be responsible for it?
What's the language in the abstract, water damage?
Some.
Some of them are, yeah.
250 people. Or whatever.
Some of them say add or about the water.
Okay.
Some of them say they're, you know, vague, but that's a good question to maybe ask the DNR at some point.
Any other questions?
So what they call the Rebarian rights, is that what they're called?
Yes.
Yeah.
They use that word the other day.
So what's the point, like, you know, Greg went through the abstracts, what's the point of the money, is it not all the same, right?
Yeah, and I think, I think it was just to kind of give us an idea of, you know, what the abstracts would have to say about it, basically. I, I believe...
The DNR asked for that right away, to collect property owners. The DNR did.
Yeah.
Right away, they asked for that.
And they, they, they basically, all of Greg's work on all that stuff was, you know, on our project on their behalf, that was all paid for by the grant that we got, so...
Did you receive an over adjustment?
Yeah.
It looks like that.
Yeah. Preliminary, the bridge cost itself is about 130 grand. But, but then you add in, because of the cost of the bridge, and we have the abutments and all that stuff, now we go over that state bidding threshold, which means we have to bid it out, which means it has to be engineered, which means that now the cost is right around that half a million dollar mark. Another problem with the state bonding system, or the state bidding system. And a lot of times, this makes projects unrealizable, realizable, unrealistic for, for small communities.
Yep.
But... Any other questions? Thank you, Don. The time is 5:01. At this time, we are going to recess our city council meeting and move into the street slash alley vacation public hearing, which is slated for 5:00 p.m. Remember, during this time, we cannot make motions or do that when we move back into our city council meeting. So there is, item number 10, that sample resolution is in our council packet. And Don, do you want to speak to this?
Yep, I do, I want to switch screens here, if I can do that.
We also have Mr. Kirk Lindberg, who has his seat. He's a Jason property owner, so Kirk, feel free to interject in the conversation.
Sure. Thank you.
Because we've got what we need up here. So up on the screen is basically the picture of the area we're talking about. And just to kind of start things off, Mr. Lindberg had, had contacted us about a project that he was looking to do with a garage on his property. And where he wanted to position his garage, really, there's, there's an alley that goes through there. And just to show you, we'll get it this way. So here's his property right here. And the city has an undeveloped alley that goes all along the back of these houses, from Fourth Avenue down to Sixth down here. But the unique thing about this, or odd thing about this, is on the other side of this alley, every one of these properties have land again, all along here. Little bit break right there where that undeveloped street is, but then down here too, they have, so they got property, they got an alley, and then they got property again. So when we were looking at this and talking to him about his project, we thought, well, yeah, it doesn't make sense, because of the slopes, where the, where this is, everything else, it doesn't make sense that we ever put an alley in through here, without the alley. And so we thought, there is no reason not to consider vacating. But not only vacating his, there's no reason to, to not just vacate the rest of them, all along here. This street is also basically, drops down and then comes to an end right here, at the end of this property. And currently, the property owner, this property owner right here is using it as a garden. So as we talked about it, Brian and I talked about it, there is really no reason to, to not vacate this stuff, because we'll never develop it. So, you know, to, to go through the process, what we ended up doing was, kind of distributed a petition amongst all these property owners, to see what their interest was. And of the, of the property owners along this, this line of, of properties here, I have talked to all of them, all of them are on board, that actually, I've got signatures on the petition from these north, north, the property north of Fifth Avenue. And this individual, I sent the file letters, but this individual on the south side of the street there, I mailed him, he, he, I couldn't get ahold of prior to meeting the petition, and giving it before the council to call the public hearing, but I did go out and meet with him, and showed him what we were doing, and he, he's fine with it also. As a matter of fact, he likes the idea of obtaining half of his property or a garden there. So basically, in your packet, there was a, a resolution 2021-12. And that resolution basically, I think, yeah, that resolution basically goes through and, and does the action of vacating the street. The resolution has the, the legal description, and what I basically did with the legal description was just talked about where the alley was located, going through Flyberg Second Edition, as well as identifying where this street is between, in this Flyberg first and second block between the lots. So it's pretty clear on what's being vacated. I, I don't know, that's about all I'd have, have to say on it, unless you guys would have some questions, or Mr. Lindberg has anything he'd like to add to it? Anything?
No, I think it was pretty clear.
Okay.
So any questions?
How did this ever happen in the first place, if they ran an alley through?
They're all over this...
I'd, yeah, I'd like to know, that's not the only one. There's many of them, that will never develop into alleys.
Yeah, most of the time, you see, they, if, if we have alleys going through the neighborhoods, they're right back in the property line. And for some reason, this one wasn't done that long. This was done way back when the city was plotted out. Who, who knows how many, you know...
Yeah. To the...
Years ago.
To the east of this, up on Fifth Street, all those people in the back have Sixth Street running through their yard. It'll never go anywhere. It can't, I mean, this would never...
Yeah, that's way, that's way over.
Yeah, it's way over to the east. But that's another one of those roads, that it's a undeveloped road that was just plotted out when, when they put it together and...
So the second avenue runs straight across there, there's probably never going to be a bridge.
Right.
That's kind of the way they plotted things out back in the day.
Yeah, they just did it. Weird.
Going forward, you just clean it up?
Yep.
Any questions? I move to approve the resolution.
Oh, you can't do that, why? Close the hearing here.
Any other questions before we adjourn our public hearing? If not, we'll adjourn our public hearing, and we'll reconvene our city council meeting at here, as long as we can take action.
Oh. So, yeah, that's what I'd be looking for, a, a motion from the council, or actually the council to approve the resolution.
Will we adopt 2021-12?
I'll say it.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing out, all in favor, second public saying aye. Aye. Both the same. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
Yep.
We'll move back up to item number eight, library report. That is in your packet. There's also a two-page additional library bills that was on your desk this evening, that were with the report. Kirk, do you have anything to add?
I do not. Once again, I was out of town, unable to attend the meeting.
Major? Don, one of the things that I just want to point out is, with the additional, with the, the library billing list was not in the packet, so it's sitting in front of you guys. But one of those, what was in the packet was kind of a letter to the library from Climate Matrix regarding that roof project. And I, I guess, at, at one point, the roof units were not, you know, the AC and stuff was not supposed to be pulled, they're saying it wasn't supposed to pull off the roof, but they were. So there was a letter, that illegal copy was in the packet, just explaining, or letting the library board know that there will be an additional bill coming, because those units had to be put back up on the roof again. That's what that second little one bill listing, one page, you know, just as one item is, that's what that is. So typically, you know, the bill listings get to, gets approved by the board, council, you know, includes a report or whatever. In this particular case, because of the way it came in and stuff, that's part of the roof project. So, and I know the library board has to approve all expenses or whatever, but I just want the council to take, take action, if they would, approving the payment of that by the city as part of the roof project. Because we've been paying for the whole roof project.
So you want to move motion here?
Well, I think...
What's that?
What do you normally do as a library list?
We just approve, not approve or report. Well, I, I say, I'll make a motion that, along with approving the library report, given in our packet, we pay the 2,268.71 additional expense occurred as a result of HVAC unit figuring into the roof.
Okay. That is a motion. Is there a second? All second. Motion second. Discussion?
So that wasn't part of the, the removal of those things weren't in the original plan?
Disconnecting them were...
Disconnecting them, and that was done. They were disconnected.
And they did, and then they moved them. They didn't have to put them back up, but they had to reconnect and reset them, because they were moved when they put the matting down in that area.
But there was, there was room originally, in the conversation, there was room originally to loosen, if you will, the units. And they could be lifted up enough to work under, you know, slide things under, or whatever it were, and then unbeknownst to us, they were craned up.
So my question is, I mean, wouldn't this cost then fall to those problems that they didn't remove at the beginning?
Um, no, because it's in the HVAC system. If they had, we had to move, for their job, you have to move for their job. We, we could try, but I doubt that the architect sent it through.
It wasn't in the, the plans and the specs that they...
You know, they'd probably pay it too.
Submitted and approved, didn't they?
It's true, but if the original plan was not to remove them from the roof.
I mean, if that wasn't the item that they submitted, and then they did something over that, without doing a change or...
I have to probably look at that bill, if that's what you want to look at doing, because we'll have to break down some of the labor and, and stuff like that, to what the original cost would have been, over and above. Because we knew we had to disconnect them, but yeah, the charge to take them down and put them back up would, would possibly fall on them.
Well, my question is, in the bidding documents, did it specifically state, do not take the HVAC off the roof?
I don't think it stated, I don't, well, I mean, that's been a long time, but I don't think it stated, do not take off. But it was not necessary to remove from the roof.
Okay. It would really depend on how the architect stated it, because...
Right. And I'll, I'll talk to, I can call Scott tomorrow and ask him about it. Figure it out one way or the other.
I know that was the biggest thing, I think, that's what Climate Matrix kind of referred to somewhere, was that...
That letter, she kind of resurfaced that.
Their take was, they didn't have to be taken off, but some added expense to put them back on, we need to take that up with the contractor, the architect.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
I don't understand why they took them off.
I'm not clear. I, I'm not sure why they did many things.
Well, you would use your access for laying the roof, you know, but apparently it was movable without...
All they would have had to do is lift them. One or the other, they would have had to lift them.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
They wouldn't go around.
Well, they wouldn't seal if they went around them. They'd have, they had to go, you know, wrap the, everything up there, so, I guess.
You don't have to seal them, okay.
I'm not a reporter. And these guys haven't come back, so I don't know.
I mean, I guess...
The motion is to pay that, but I mean...
Well, to pay Climate Matrix, whether or not we go after...
Right, we'll have to... We have to pay for that. We'll get it back out of them. Just like the concrete.
Yeah, so then the other question before, I mean, how are they doing on that punch list? Is that punch list complete? Is that...
They cleaned out a gutter, picked up some nails once, but they don't respond to the architect, to us, to...
Like, could we all make this thing?
A lot, we've only paid them one time.
Only paid for the material.
We've only paid like 75,000, I don't think that even covered all the material.
Maybe it was something...
It was the first original, it was like 76,000 dollars is how we paid them. Haven't seen another bill. Scott, Design Intent, has asked about that, asked when they're coming, sent them punch lists, sends them again, and finally, they met, and then they didn't come back yet, and have not billed us.
So...
Because he calls and asks too, have you seen a bill from them? I'm like, I have not seen the bill.
So at what point do we... We're not. I mean, you know, how do you, how do you finish it?
I think we're going to have to probably have a discussion about that coming up.
That library is not in the contract?
That too, I need to ask Scott about, about how we go about this. He, and he was, he's so polite, he said, this is the simplest job I've ever seen, and they're making it huge. So, yep. I will get back to you more on that next month.
Did you read the motion back, please?
Okay. To approve the library report, it's pay the additional 2,000, how many were those? That was for...
Okay. One question I have, is they got a whole bunch of things crossed off on their, on their...
Yeah.
What's, do we have an explanation of that?
Don, can you explain that? Because I'm not so sure.
The bill listing?
Yeah, all the, my understanding is, from the question that was asked of Wayne Ronigan, was that it just signifies budget line items that are over or under budget. Why they signaled those, singled those particular ones out, I don't know. But that was his reply. It just represents things that were over or under budget.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing out, all in favor of the motion, second public saying aye. Aye. Both the same. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number nine, planning commission member, Don.
Yeah, we had, due to family, some family issues, one of the planning commissioners had to step down. And so this is just kind of an FYI to the council, that we will be looking for a new planning commission person. And we'll kind of probably start that by just kind of posting some things that we're looking at it, or that we're looking for one, and letting people know where they can pick up the application to apply for that voluntary position.
Our current planning commission, how many of our local city records?
Excuse me. I think there's only one, when you think of that's enough.
That is enough.
And obviously, you know, when you get the applications, I think general preference should be given to the person that lives in the city limits. But if we don't get any, and you apply this very, you know, involving the community that's outside the city, then it's better, although also.
And that's what happened before, they get non-city records.
Right, that's proper.
Properly involved.
Right. And that's the other thing to consider, if they own property, consider it.
Any questions for Don? Are you plenty of time for questions? Okay, thank you. Item number twelve, soccer field transfer to school.
I'm gonna try. Do you miss it then?
Yeah, there is, item number twelve, it was a quick, quick claim deed by the mayor in your vision.
Yes.
Before the council meeting.
So, for some time ago, I don't remember when it was, but when, when Rudy Martinez came to the city council meeting, you know, as he was talking to council about the Pelican Rapids United Soccer Association, he made some reference to, I think on behalf of the school too, that, that the school would possibly be interested in taking over the land that the soccer field sits on. And so?
Wrong deal.
Wrong.
Yeah, they had the wrong map up.
They got the wrong map up.
It was up.
Yeah. So, um, so anyway, when he mentioned that, we've, we've had a couple conversations since then with the school, and from speaking with Superintendent Brian Corp, they are interested in, in taking the land from the city and, and then taking control of what happens down there, I guess. But, so one of the things that we did was, because they'd like to do this, we put together a quick claim deed. The school board has, is going to be talking about this on August sixteenth at their meeting. And so we wanted to be, we wanted to have everything kind of set in, in motion so that they could, if the school board decided to do this, it would be pretty much a done deal, just a matter of signing up on the quick claim deed. So I put a copy of the quick claim deed at your, at your stations or at the table there, and in there it shows the legal description based on what I put together. And what I kind of put together was, was I took the legal description of our land out there right now, and, and basically then, I just kind of revised it, and I was talking, I met with the city attorney about it, and the city attorney looked at my legal description, and she wasn't sure that that would fly as, as I did it. She said, I think you might have to get it surveyed. She said, I think you're gonna have to get surveyed. So what I did was, I got ahold of, well, first of all, I just mentioned that the prior city attorney, we put the legal descriptions together in the past for deals like this or transactions like this, and we never had an issue running to the county that way. And so just to kind of be on the safe side, I actually got ahold of Compass surveying and talked to Jack, Jake, a little bit about it too, and he said, well, that's typically what they would be too. They could either, depending on if we wanted to do a whole survey, or if they just need a written legal description. And I showed him the legal description I put together, which is what's on that quick claim deed, and he said, that's exactly what we would do. So, so going forward, as far as the quick claim deed, what we want to do is the council approves this transfer is, we would just actually send it in to the county, and if the county kicks it back for some reason, from my understanding, it's the city has jurisdiction over whether they require an actual survey or not. But if the county kicks it back or whatever, then we may have to go through the state, the process of getting a survey. But why would we want to give this to the school? In the past, every time the school wanted to do something out there, you know, they had to come to the city, or the soccer association, they had to come to the city and get permission to do it because it was our land. And so they had to go through that process. This would eliminate that process, plus right now we have a, under the 2015 lease agreement that the school and the city has, the city is responsible for mowing and general upkeep of that, that land out there, as well as fifty percent of the fertilizing and seeding, and then also we, we have some reported bodies out there. So it's clear to see that, number one, by transferring this to the school, they get the benefit of not having to deal with us anymore when they want to do something, but also the city saves operating costs for the public works department by transferring this over. There's really no reason for the city to have it. Other than that, Brian, I know that, that, you know, when summer comes, and we are mowing and mowing that, all that property out there, it keeps guys from mowing other places too, so it kind of helps minimize the mowing and the backlog of stuff that they have to do as far as mowing in the summer nights, so.
Not doing anything else to that, Brian?
No, it's just a lot of me.
Does this button turn up your car?
What's that?
Is this a button?
Um, no, the, on the east end, so your right end, there's a swamp area, and then we actually have a sewer main that runs through there, and then it's car field. Yeah.
Well, on the west end then?
On the west end?
The pit is that, that's the city ground.
Yep, the yellow outlined on the west end is, would still be ours.
And now there's, you want to see the property, red property line is?
Yep.
In the road, is there always an easement then?
There is, there's still a thirty-foot easement there that we have with?
City can use, or you do use?
Yes. We still own the road. We'll still have a thirty-foot right-of-way there, and then we have an easement with Mr. Wilson way on the north end there. But yeah, we won't lose anything other than the maintenance of that field.
Yeah, so in that legal description, it talks about, it's the, it's the, in this section, the quarter section, it's the east, seven hundred and fifty feet is what this is kind of, kind of conveyed, but it, it says, except this sixty-six feet along, which is still a right-of-way, an unplatted or undeveloped right-of-way, sixty-six foot right-of-way, but it also says, and also accept this thirty-three feet along the south portion of this, of this area in red. And that kind of keeps the easement that we have for Mr. Wilson to that area. Now, you do see that in that seven hundred and fifty feet, it curls up through this corner, but I just think working with, if it was anybody else, it might become kind of an issue, but because it's the school, you know, we may at some point, if it becomes a plank, then we may have to just kind of route this road along here a little bit more, but we both are fine with working direct down there.
Yeah. We were, we were also contributing to the maintenance agreement cost, right?
That's what I was?
That's what, that's what he's alluding to.
You don't, you don't watch that much, right?
Um, it costs us about nine grand in fertilization, and we do all the mowing and all the fixing of the sprinkler system that's now starting to wear out.
Do you have any financial savings to give?
We could save a lot of money. Yep.
Who owns the irrigation pump?
They actually put a well in, the school put a well in, but they were gonna do that regardless because the irrigation pump wasn't always that good. So, so they had somebody come and put a well in, and I'm like, well, you know, city council decides not to do it, that's our well. They're like, we don't care.
Is that just the sleeve wall or sample well or?
Uh, they put a four-inch sleeve wall in.
Really?
Yeah. I think it's like forty-seven or forty-eight feet.
When did they do that?
Couple of weeks ago. The field, the pump, well, the river dried out, the pump was sticking out of the water, you know, we could never keep it low enough. And so the only places that were wet, it looked like a big polka dot out there, every, where you could see every head, because it was dark green around, you know, beautiful green around every sprinkler head, and the rest of it was terrible brown, it was terrible.
Do we call and beat that with it?
Forty-seven, I think he said.
Okay. I would approve the quick claim deed for the ground field transfer to the school.
I'll say it.
Motion second, discussion, discussion. Yeah, what is that, a hereditary tenement and a perp?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
In the deed? Together with all hereditary tenements and a perp.
Anything sitting on the land? Anything, anything down there that basically, that is sitting on the land now?
Because they have to use those fancy words.
They have to use them fancy words.
Any other discussion? Hearing out all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Okay, let's go down to item number thirteen. A favor for Don?
Yeah, I gotta tell you, I do.
Okay. Talk slow.
That's the last council meeting, basically, a department head meeting, and then work with the clerk to set the agenda up and, and then prep to get ready for the, excuse me, the meeting tonight. I did meet with West Central Initiative staff on July fifteenth to talk about the northwest land. If you remember, West Central Initiative was gonna be working with the planning commission on planning the northwest land, so they wanted to, to sit down with me one day just to run out there and look at that area. So I took them out there, and we looked at the, the property out there, and then I also attended the, the planning commission meeting on July twenty-sixth. At which meeting they basically talked about that land, and also West Central Initiative was here, so they, you know, they kind of talked about, you know, kind of going forward and how they're gonna, how that process would look. Then I met with Jake from Sarswell regarding the next county plan steering committee meeting. Just kind of, he, he usually touches base with me, or wants to touch base with me prior to that meeting, just to kind of look at what they're gonna be talking about, stuff like that too, just in case I had any suggestions or any thoughts on it. So I think the next meeting is set for Thursday, Thursday evening. I alerted too, I had conversations with Brian Superintendent, School Superintendent Brian Corp regarding the transfer field, or the transfer to soccer field. I then was also working on the street and alley education documents, public notices and all that stuff that, that had to be put together, as well as the resolutions and documents for the housing tax abatement. I should mention that, well, we'll be talking about that here in about half an hour, but so that's all I'll say on that. I attended the, the, I don't know, the monthly, it wasn't necessarily the monthly, but the next 2024 project design meeting at City Hall, that was when MinDOT came in again and was here physically looking at the designs and stuff, and just kind of had things on display. Went over, the first time we met, we went over the Highway fifty-nine corridor, the second time we met, they concentrated more on the Highway one away corridors, just to make sure that we're still on the same page based on what everybody's been talking about over the months. It's more the, the design guys, it wasn't all of MinDOT central office like it's been when we were having the advisory committee meetings and all that stuff, it was more just the design staff, that we kind of tried to finalize what they're putting together to start showing the city of Pelican Rapids, the community, when they started having these public meetings. I attended a quarterly safety committee meeting. I also met with representative from Montana University, they're doing a study on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And so they're grabbing some small rural communities, and they were giving Pelican Rapids as one of, one of those potential. And so I spent an hour talking with this individual that just kind of wanted to know, you know, what Pelican Rapids was doing, how we're, how, what have we done as far as the process to, to look at our bike and pedestrian infrastructure? You know, a lot of it had to do with, you know, just providing them with the information and what we've done since we started looking at this MinDOT project, and, and the fact that the city council had also approved having the bike and pedestrian study done for, for the city of Pelican Rapids, then guys working in partnership for help, and the outcome of that, and what some of the things in that talked about, trying to put in place. You know, we also talked about, I talked a little bit about the Safe House to School study that we had done many years ago, that kind of helped us identify areas that could use some work on potentially connecting up different sidewalk sections to get people to, kids to the elementary school, you know, all those types of things. There was other individuals that were identified in our community for this researcher to talk to, and so they were gonna be reaching out to those individuals too, just to get additional information. Those people were like the, the community residents that were on that bike and ped I also attended the monthly virtual Otterton County CVA meeting that we have every month, where they update us on, on all the different communities or cities that attend that thing. You know, we just talk about what's going on in their communities. The Otterton County Community Development Authority Director also kind of, just kind of keeps us up to date on what the county is working on and what programs they have in place to help from an economic development standpoint. A lot of the discussions lately have been kind of still centered around the ARP or the, the next stimulus package. By the way, we did get the first half of that, I think it was a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars from, from the state, it was kind of passed from the federal government down to the state to us. And so we have the first half, but we won't get the second half until July of 2022. So now it's there, it's just a matter of trying to figure out what we're gonna do with it. We do have some things identified that we want to start spending that money on, but prior to making them purchases, obviously it'll be something we'll come to council with, and let you guys know to approve them purchases. Then I did attend the, the update on the dam, that I just kind of went over with you guys, and we talked about the dam update. I took another week of vacation off, so I was gone for a while during, between the last meeting and this one. And then I have, like I said, when we were talking about the city, the street and alley vacation, I met with each one of those property owners. After sending them a letter, just letting them know what we were trying to accomplish, then met with all of them and talking about it, as we went over the petitions, so maybe what they were signing, that type of a thing. I prepped for, and then met with the mayor, councilman Mark Craft, and the goation with the union again, and hopefully we're kind of at an end point there, and trying to wrap, I haven't heard back from them yet, but the hopes are that by the next council meeting, we'll actually have a general budget and a, and a union contract that considers, so. And then I am working on the 2022 general budget, and I met with the mayor and Superintendent Brian Olson to go over and look at this issue that you guys kind of resolved on at, at Ridge Crest regarding those utilities. One of the things I want to mention about that too is kind of a, when this happened, you know, oftentimes when we have these, these street projects, and we've got these really long frontages lots like this one was, and the city oftentimes, when we have oversized lots like that, we do think about, should we put another water and service line in, or service line in? And almost every time, most times, you hear the property owner saying, I don't, because they would be assessed for it. So they've got one that they're replacing, and another one that we're putting in, and they say, I don't want that because I'll never sell that property. It's always gonna be, you know, we hear that time and time again. It's always going to be, you know, we hear that time and time again. And this is a prime example of where the city should have said, we're putting it in, but we won't, we'll, we'll defer your assessment until such a time that you put a house on or sell it. That way it gets in, they didn't bear the burden, but and so the city, you know, has to pay that and they're on the, you know, they're on the hook for it until they can actually kick the assessment in. Oftentimes it could be, you know, a timeframe, seven years, ten years tied to it, where it kind of tells the property owner, you know, whatever the case may be. But this is a prime example, I think what happened here was they didn't want it put in, the city said, okay, we're not going to put it in. The bad part is if it would have been put in back in two thousand and one, these lines probably, both of them probably would have cost about twelve hundred bucks total. Now we're looking at six grand. So it, it, you know, I, I point that out because I think going forward, when, when we have street projects where we're ripping up all this stuff, the council, as part of that process, we really should look at and say, if we're putting it in, we'll just defer the assessment. So you don't have to worry about it so that it's there for the next person because there's always going to be a next person. Just my, something I wanted to kind of throw out.
That brings, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Brings up two things. With a street project that we get coming up, are there going to be some spots where we're going to want to do that?
Because we're along the highways, you know, the highways are pretty developed.
Yeah.
There might be some spots, but if, you know, we'll look at that. But at this point, I can't think of any place that, that would be possibly an issue.
Second thing, you need to write this down for the next guys. We're all going to be gone when the next street project goes in or whatever.
Well, Brian and I, Brian's obviously been a part of this conversation and, and, uh, you know, the engineer, uh, Bob Schleeman too at Apex, he's been around for quite a while and he will be around for a long time unless you guys change engineering firms, the city does sometimes, but yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that this is.
But the engineers on this project were Martin Peterson, they were still like this though.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, but yeah, I think it's just, it, it, you know, it comes down to, a lot of times the council, when we're talking about this type of stuff, even on Fifth Avenue, look how many times on Fifth Avenue, you know, we've had people come up here and say, you know, we'd like the city to put water and sewer down the street. And, um, so we kind of, we hold a public hearing, I think we've done this once or twice, we've held a public hearing on the potential of doing it. And you had property owners that wanted it, you had property owners that didn't want to have anything to do with water and sewer. And so the city basically said, okay, we're not going to do it then. Well, in some of those cases, you just got to take the hard position, it's in the best interest of the city, we're going to do it. Because Fifth Avenue is a good example of one area where there are really long frontages. They're three, four hundred feet long. And the city puts the infrastructure in because it's in the best interest of the city, best interest of the city, and defer the assessments or work out something so that it's not the burden on the property owners that exist today. But that infrastructure is there because again, if that would have been done when we first talked about that, when it was shot down, um, by the council at the time, that infrastructure would have been, poof, maybe a third or a quarter of what it's going to cost to do it now, if that, if it ever happened. And that street should have water and sewer all the way down. So there's, there were, there's ways to get it done without it being a burden to those that, that live there now. Just, but yeah, I get off that.
Write it down.
Speech.
Write it down.
I did attend the Coalition of Greater Minnesota's virtual meeting, they have that labor and employee update webinar on a quarterly basis. And that's really good information because, um, you know, they talk a lot about the labor, the, the negotiation agreements that other cities are doing and you get a real good sense of, you know, what everybody's doing for, for, you know, cost of living adjustments and health insurance, you know, you know, payments on behalf of the employees and that type of thing, so. And then just generally, you know, especially with the COVID stuff, you know, they have a lot of information about, about the COVID and, and, you know, how cities are handling those things. But I met with the mayor and councilman Foster as well as people's service regarding, um, the chloride, the chloride, um, conversations that the city's having with the MPCA. In twenty thirteen, no, twenty eighteen, we actually met with the MPCA because that's the next, one of the next big thing that's coming up, it's not the only thing. But it was one of the things that the MPCA pointed out, they're looking at all salts and, and, uh, uh, the, uh, the fluid coming out of these wastewater plants with all the salt and, and how it's affecting the, the rivers and, and, you know, waterways and whatnot and. So one of the things in twenty eighteen, they proposed to us was that they were going to be putting chloride limits in our permit. So they gave us an example of, here's where you guys are at today and here's where we'd like to put your limit. Well, there's no way we're going to meet that limit, not without doing, um, some things that involve, uh, well, the thing that they talked about then and, and we talked about the other day again was having some conversation with West Central Turkey about what they can do at the plant to try and cut down the amount of salts they're kicking out because they're obviously a, a, a finished product now, they're not a slaughter anymore, so they do a lot more of that type of thing. But it's not only West Central Turkey, it's, it's every, every resident in the city of Pelican Rapids has a water soccer. And so that's one of the ways that, that, um, we could really reduce the amount of, of chlorides that end up in our waste stream is by encouraging people to up, update or quit using water softeners because of all the salts that are used in those. And so there's, so we met the other day because the MPCA, after meeting with us in twenty thirteen, I think they're getting close to possibly coming out with a draft of our new NPDES permit, which has been expired for five years, six years. But they haven't had the staff to, to give us an updated draft. And we also had said something to them a long time ago, usually have a thirty-day comment period when your, when your permit's going to come out again. And we told them, we want sixty days. We had that right to request it and we did because when that permit comes out, we're going to have it reviewed by, the idea is to have it reviewed by, um, somebody besides just the city because we want to make sure there's nothing in there that's going to be a problem for it. So anyway, um, so we have some things that we're going to be working on that, that deal with the chlorides. I haven't replied to the MPCA, but when I met with them, this, this group the other day, it was, the, the, the MPCA wanted to know where we're at since our twenty eighteen meeting with them. And so I wanted to get these guys together to just say, okay, let's talk about how I'm going to respond to that email. And I know, you know, basically the response is going to be, you know, we haven't done anything. Number one, there's some things that we can do, uh, through asking a variance, it kind of delays when we might have to put a whole bunch of money into wastewater plant again or the water plant, but, um, we can ask for a variance. And so we're kind of going to position ourselves to do, to do that, just tell them, we're going to ask, we're going to, you know, want a variance and then we'll work on public education, basically. And start, start educating the public on things that they can do to reduce our salt use and see what kind of effect that has on our actual numbers. And then maybe later on, we can see based on what they've proposed for limits, how much we could probably bring that down. Otherwise it's, you can't put enough money into these wastewater plants to get rid of the chlorides that were kicking out, you just can't. I think ours is estimating at fifty million dollars or just like a, what they were talking about sources, there's no money out there to do this thing. And then also, last night I attended the swimming pool, uh, committee meeting and we were talking a little bit about, about the funding, um, you know, where the pool is at. I think they said that their donations are now at two point five six five million dollars. So it's creeped, creeped up a little bit and not everything that they received to date was added, it was a little bit more, it wasn't much more, but, but, you know, that's a pretty good number. Obviously that includes the city's portion of it. But one of the things that I shared with them was that, um, uh, you know, going forward, one of the things that, that we have to kind of look at is, um, the, the bonding bill, which I put it on the capital budget, budgeting system from the state again. But for us to take, utilize the legislation, the state to get money to help us do this, there's no way it's going to happen next year. The pool won't have for the following year and what's that going to do for the cost? And I mentioned that when Amy Brenson was here. If we delay this a year waiting for them guys, it's going to drive the costs up where it may even not even be able to, you know, happen for a longer period of time. So, but the other thing was to make sure that they understood, because everybody's getting kind of anxious now, the pool closes here in August, then we can start demoing. And I, I just helped them understand that we, the council wants to see the bid, we all want to see what them bids are and we cannot demo the pool or think about demoing the pool until we know what that bid is, what the bids are. Make sure that everything lines up to go because if we take the pool down, then we see what the bids are and the bid says we have to get more money, delay it a year, we're out of the pool for two years, let alone instead of one. So I just helped them understand and realize that, that, you know, we don't want to get the, you know, the cart before the horse and want to make sure we have them bids and know what the bids are going forward. The other thing that I wanted them to understand and I've got, um, I've never mentioned this or talked about this to the council, but one of the things I realized is, um, and I've got our financial advisor in Northland Securities looking at this to give us a number, but when we do the bonding for the pool, what's used to do that is a tax abatement bond. Well, we've heard the word tax abatement before, we gave tax abatement to the apartment building and we, we give them, based on, um, agreement we have with them, the tax abatement each year for so many years, us and the county, for state and us, about thirty-six thousand dollars a year. The housing projects that we're trying to get in play, uh, one of the things we'll be talking about tonight is a tax abatement for this duplex down here that the Republican at six is above. And that tax abatement gets added to the one that, um, that we have at the apartment building out there. The city's only allowed to use so much tax abatement in a given year. And that's what I have our financial advisor looking into because I think we're fine, but I just want to know what the number would be with the pool, if we have to use tax abatement, how much pool can we do before we're tapped out on tax abatement? And, you know, is it three million, is it four million, is it five million, is it fifteen million? So she's looking at that, but she just, I just wanted you guys to be, be aware of that, when we talk about bonding for the pool, it's tax abatement bonds and we've got to take into account the tax abatments that we're already doing. So she'll look into that and I'll report more on that too, but I wanted the, the pool committee, who's worked so hard to get this thing going, I wanted them to be well aware that there's, there's still things that got to come together before this is going to really be able to, to go. And, and, and I also assured them that, you know, we're all supporting the pool, we don't want, I don't think any of us would, would, um, or I think all of us would like to see within the next year or so, a different pool structured out. So let's, we just got to get there, but I want them to know there's other things that have to happen too, so. Well, was I witty enough? That's my lead, I'm sorry, thank you.
It's on our ball six.
But that, that's why I'd like, my report's after dinner, so we can get the details. Uh, Don, while you're still on the floor, do you want to explain the reason why this auditor report is on there?
Yeah, that's just a copy that was provided, the audit is done and we wanted to give the council a copy of the report so that, um, they have it, you can look through it eventually, but then the next meeting or two will, uh, invite the auditor, like we do every year, to come and go through the audit. So it's just your copy and go through it and read it.
One question regarding the dam removal, the abstracts over the effort, some people did not supply their abstracts.
Yes.
So what happens in that situation?
There's, I don't know.
Nobody was required to.
No, no, they were just asked to so that they could take a look at it and get, and get an idea of what was, how they were, how their properties were laid out or mentioned along the river and those that didn't provide them, just didn't.
I had a discussion with Representative Rasmussen here a while back and he said the most just colleagues that were talking about activities going on in communities, Pelican Rapids has far above more activities than any other community.
What do you mean at two?
Well, projects, yeah.
So it wasn't a positive thing.
Yeah, we've, we've got, we've got a lot of things going on and all really, really.
Any questions for Don? I've got a question here.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don. We'll go to item number fourteen, Mayor's Report, that will be very short. On, uh, July sixteenth, Chris Schulte from Ottertow County Historical Society did a downtown tour in this business district of Pelican Rapids. And if you've never done that before, I urge you to do it, there's a lot of history that happened and he goes in the detail of, of information that Marguerite Andrews has supplied him over the years and there, there's a lot of history downtown, definitely. I attended a twenty twenty-four Complete Streets Project Steering Committee Decision Meeting on, at City Hall on July twentieth. I met with Rachel at Historic City Hall, I don't know if anybody stopped to meet with her, she's working on this for City Hall, she's employed by who, Don? Ottertow County?
Ottertow, yeah, Ottertow County or Lakes Country, Ottertow Lakes Country Association.
Yeah. And she has a degree in, uh, tourism or something to that regard, so, so stopped down and see her, when is her last day there, October something or?
Yeah, I think you guys basically said it, um, you know, when the, the hour, it was going to be open from May till October, so it's something.
Also attended local foods, local places steering committee Zoom meeting on July twenty-ninth and a car entry and road state parade on July thirty-first. Uh, attended a police union contract negotiation meeting with Councilman Mark Craft and Administrator Solga here at City Hall on August third. Met with Superintendent Olson and Administrator Solga, uh, in regards to the water and sewer, uh, service lines that were not provided on Ridgecrest Lane for, uh, Miss, uh, Mayor's Lot. Uh, October, excuse me, October, August sixth, I had an interview with Natalie Villlock of, uh, Montana University, which Administrator Solga mentioned regarding pedestrian biking trails and their accessibility within our community. And, and she is working with the MinDOT on that project since they have had, uh, four or five smaller communities within Pelican Rapids who shaved down interviews of it. Uh, August ninth, met with Councilman Foster, Administrator Solga and People's Service regarding the wastewater treatment facility chlorine discharge to the Pelican River and upcoming permit. And then met with Administrator Solga and also Councilman Foster was there to review the agenda for this afternoon's city council meeting. Any questions? You're welcome. Okay, uh, this, we have to wait till sixth exactly?
I, I, it's at our, at our ball seat, so.
Okay. So at this time, we'll, uh, recess our city council meeting and go to our tax abatement public hearing. And again, during this time, we'll discuss this tax abatement, no action can be taken. So Don, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, this, this, what we, what, we, we received a housing tax abatement application based on that program that we put in place and that we're working, um, cooperatively with the county alongside the county's program to provide, um, tax refunds for people that put homes in Pelican. In per those guidelines, it was up to five thousand dollars over a five-year period. They pay their property taxes, when they pay their property taxes, we turn around and we basically do it back, you know? And like I said, it's up to five years or five years, whichever happens first. But we've received an application from Zachary Miller and, uh, or the county did, the county takes the applications and then they review them. Ottertow County has already looked at this and they've approved the abatement for him, uh, from the county level. So it basically comes to, to the city level also. I, I spoke with Zachary Miller and I'm kind of surprised that he's not here unless he's running late, but he asked if he needed to be at the public hearing and I said, obviously it'd be nice if he could make it here, um, in case you guys had any questions. But in a nutshell, his application is. But in a nutshell, his application is to put a duplex down on the lot that you see up on the screen. And this is, um, Lake Region Estates Block 2 Lot 1. It's the one you probably can, probably can tell, it's, well, you, you probably know us from digging dirt down there already. But, um, it's right down across where the entry to Scott Fox's, um, old property is, is how we do that now. So, he's proposing to put a duplex on this. This will be a, a rental property, it won't be an owner occupied, um, at this time. Uh, that doesn't mean that eventually they might decide to basically either sell individually or live in one side of whatever the case may be. So, um, in, in filling out the application, he understands, he's, he's, you know, following the program guidelines. He understands, uh, paying the taxes and then getting fun, you know, getting the rebates and all that stuff. So dividing by the terms of it, um, there's, in, in the resolution that, that was in the package that you guys have to consider that approves the tax abatement. It talks about, uh, not only the tax abatement, but a potential lot split. And the reason it's worded that way is because he really does have the option, and it doesn't have to be decided on right away, um, of splitting the lot and having two separate parcels on it or having one unit, um, or one parcel. So, and the difference would be basically, if he doesn't split it, he just gets one tax statement. Let's say the value of this thing is 300,000. He'd get one tax statement for a $300,000 property, his property taxes would be based off of 300,000 dollar property. And then, and then, um, his abatement would be based off of that also. If he decides, if they keep ownership of it and that's the way he does it, great. If he decides to sell one side of it to somebody, then basically it would have to be, it would be, it would be split in two separate parcels. Then basically the abatement would come in two parcels valued at, let's say half, 150, 150. From a, from a tax abatement standpoint, that pretty much comes out the same. Might be a couple of dollars here or there difference. Because the county basically, when it's a, when it's a not split, it's, it's, you know, uh, home's got it figured, figured at a 1% in their, in their formula. If it's split, it's figured out differently, 1.25 or whatever. So it would make a little bit of difference, but not that big of a difference that matters really for us from a dollar standpoint on yearly basis, from these property taxes. So, um, the, the resolution just talks about potential lot split. So, when, if the council approves this resolution tonight, passes the resolution, you are basically approving not only the tax abatement, but if he decides to split it, you're approving, you can go ahead and split it, it's not a big deal. And it really isn't a big deal. He just didn't know which way he'd do it at the time, and it doesn't matter anyway. From a tax abatement standpoint. Yeah, I think that's, that's it. Like I said, it's too bad that he's not, he just could ask them more about it, but are there any questions?
Don, what is the zone right now?
It's zone, it's, it's zone residential, I believe R1, but whether it's R1 or R2, it still allows for, uh, uh, duplexes. Yep, there doesn't have to be any rezoning to it.
So we're looking at the green.
Yeah, the lot that he.
Light green.
Yes, this will make, this is the lot that he's, uh, he's going to be building on.
You just questioned that there?
Yeah.
You questioned that sewer devastation down there across the street. Um, does this have to go before the school district also?
No, because, because the school district isn't part of the tax abatement program, it's just the, the city and the county.
Any other questions before we adjourn the tax?
We got water and sewer in there, right?
Yeah, water and sewer comes in, they've got, because they've got, uh, the sewer services coming in right here. He's already got that all figured out.
We didn't have to hunt for that though, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who weren't sure it was there?
Yeah, pretty common, just had to look at the rain map. But, and you know, with the, the amount of housing that we need, this, this is a good thing, so.
Okay, this is a side part, this is two houses that are below where there are water and sewer.
These houses?
Yeah.
I think this one comes over from here, this is all one property, this comes from, from, uh, First Street. And then this one here, I believe there's lines that run through here that get their, their water and sewer from there.
Any other questions?
Hang on before you close it.
Oh, there he is. There's a man of the hour.
Mr. Miller. Uh, I would just kind of explain the project for them, if you have any, any, anything you'd like to say to them or if they have any questions for, for Zach or Don, that'd be great too.
We're excited to see what's happening.
So, um, I, my question would be, how far along are you?
Um, we just got the, um, that built, was that, let's see, Friday? And so, um, we're getting, uh, water and sewer in there. And, um, we're already getting formed up for concrete, we're hoping to pour concrete on Friday.
When you have, hope to have it all done and?
Done?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we're going to get it all closed in here in about a month. But then, you know, you've got to get electricians and plumbers and HVAC in there, and it, it takes time, but, um, I'm hoping to have it done, done by the end of the year. So, yeah.
Any other questions for Zach or Don? Before we adjourn, before we adjourn, any other questions?
I'm just like, I'm curious, like, the lumber thing, will you, you're able to purchase everything you need?
Yep, so, um, it's actually come down drastically, which has been real help. Uh, let's see, like, uh, two by fours are about half what they were, um, a couple of months ago. And even, um, like the, uh, what we call OSB, the plywood use for the outside, it was actually over 50 bucks a sheet there for a while, and it's back down to like 20 bucks. It's come drastically down, so that's a huge help. Um, part of, just to be entirely honest, part of, so I'm doing this for my mother, um, which, Brent, you know my mother. So, um, she sold farmland, and actually, at the time of the sailing, um, we didn't realize she was going to pay so much in capital gains. And so what we did was we, um, used a 1031 exchange, and so we're putting that into this. And so, um, so yeah, I think it's going to work out really well. Probably wasn't the best time to be building, but I'm actually thankful that, I mean, prices are actually really leveling out nicely.
Any other questions? If not, we'll adjourn the public hearing, we'll reconvene our city council meeting. At this time, we're looking for a motion to approve revolution 2021-13 approving property tax abatements and lots split.
The who?
Motion second, discussion?
Yeah, just for Zach's sake, the lots split thing, they're approving it, but it doesn't mean you have to do it, it's, you can do it your way.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Discussion? Carry none, all in favor, say if you might be saying aye.
Aye.
Both the same, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was quick and easy.
That was quick and easy.
Uh, see, no other business on this evening's agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor, say if you might be saying aye. Both the same. Any other?
Are you putting, uh?
Recording stopped.
What are you putting for outside on it, uh, lap siding or steel siding or?
Um, I think we're going to use a vinyl.
Vinyl?
Yeah.
I just, I just heard last week now that there's a, another bubble, um, like steel siding, uh, or steel bolbar.
Steel is, yeah.